I call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District. Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Free?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
All right, thank you. The first item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. And this covers a variety of items in personnel, business services, and finance. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
Sub motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any discussion about items on the consent agenda?
Yes, I have a question regarding the, in the business section for the North America, the payout of the forty-nine thousand thirty-seven and twenty-seven thousand. And Scott, maybe you can clarify, North America Inc. and the PSI Associates. I mean, I'm just not clear who they are and that payout, is that like over, over what, over the year or? Yeah, if you can clarify what these North American payouts.
Yeah, it's not letting me switch over to that and look. I believe these are all confirming purchase orders from the non-publics, but hold on one second. Take a quick look.
You're right, Scott, that's what they're for.
Yeah, so these are all, these are all confirming purchase orders, meaning that they, they're for services, but they didn't get the purchase orders in, so they have to be board approved. But these are all for the non-public schools for services. So, yeah, we're a pass-through agency for money to them. So we process their purchase orders and those kinds of things. So that's what you're seeing here.
Okay. All right, and what about PSI Associates? Is that a law firm or?
No, that is, they provide, I believe they provide special ed services. And again, services to non-public students, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Can we get some clarification on resolution to a major contract, Scott?
Uh, yes. One second here, I'm trying to get back to the resolution. So that is, you'll recall that my contract is kind of sync with, with others in terms of timing. So my current contract isn't expiring in the time in which the board wants to have all employees increase a premium share for insurance contributions come January. So I, uh, told Jody and we agreed to put this on so that effective January one, my premium share will be the same as everyone else's.
And this is the premium share that currently at the amount we have instituted the teacher's contract set at?
Correct, so, so the issue was that mine, you know, was locked in at the flat rate that it was at the time this contract started. So it wasn't changing along with everyone else's as that happened. So this new language ties my contract to EAPSC. EAPSC is Me Tooed to the teachers, as is both the OXC union. So, so everyone's, everyone's cost of living, plan design, and premium share will all follow the teacher's contract.
So we're making your contract consistent with everybody else across the board? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, it was already, yeah, it was already consistent in terms of the cost of living and the plan design, those followed everything else. But it was a fixed premium share, which now we've moved, bumped up to fifteen percent come January, that was still stuck at that rate. So it's changing that to, yes, be consistent with everyone else.
So I think it's pretty important that people understand, or the community understands, the whole Me Too component on how the contracts are negotiated. And everything is pretty much pegged off of the seven-nine, seven-nine-five union and the recent negotiations and the impasse and the contract that we are imposing on the district. Essentially, at the time that contract is ratified, then every single employee in the school district then would be having the the same level of healthcare benefits that's in the contract that we met a loss for words here, but it's essentially, it's the, it's the contract that we've given to the teachers.
The contract that we're implementing. It's the last best offer contract that we're implementing. Also, I just want to note that the, um, the language in Scott's, this amendment to Scott's contract will now mirror the language in Liz's contract. So we're just making everything aligned. So when we implement that contract, everybody has the same healthcare premium and the same healthcare plan.
Yeah.
And what is the EAPSC?
What's up, Beverly?
Yes, what's the EAPSC?
That's the Administrator Union. Yeah, the educator, administration, professorial, I don't know. Don't remember the acronym.
Okay.
It's the Administrator Union, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just aligning, so everybody is on that same, that same healthcare plan.
Correct.
Well, I just want to say, I appreciate the fact that, you know, as we're working through these contracts, Scott, you're working with us to try to resolve this. And yes, regrettably for everybody, including yourself, it's going to mean that there's less benefits. And if you look at the resolution on, that we passed when we implemented the, the last contract with the teachers' union, it's all based on costs. And I think it needs to be said that there's some miscommunication or misinformation in the community that people think us board members benefit from any of those benefits. We don't have benefits from the, uh, the school district. And I think it's important that everybody know that.
Hey, any other question?
I would just like to thank Scott for doing the honorable thing and setting yourself in line with everybody else, so thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that as well. Any other discussion on this?
I do have a question about the supplementals. Um, I'm worried about wrestling and basketball in particular. When do those seasons start?
I could take that. Hi, Malia. They start practice next month in November. So we will be meeting with Joe this week and Liz to, uh, to discuss the winter season.
Okay, those two sports in particular are very intense, body contact between both teammates and opponents. And I don't know how to, you know, what, how, how to design protocols to keep those student athletes safe. And so that's my main concern. I mean, you know, tennis and cross country, it's a whole lot easier than wrestling and basketball.
Absolutely, and we'll be discussing those protocols. And we're getting some guidance from OHSAA as well before we get into those, into those sports.
Thank you. Can you keep us apprised of what the protocols will be?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Any other discussion? Then Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Free?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is discussion on Ed Choice. And before we get started on this and I turn it over to Liz, I do want to make a couple of comments. The first comment is, I know that this subject can bring up a lot of strong emotions. And I just want to remind everybody that one of the best things about our community is that it is diverse and inclusive. And vouchers are legal, nobody's doing anything wrong by taking a voucher. However, they do cause the funding of schools to rely more on property taxes. And that means a system that was already declared illegal multiple times because of over-relying on property taxes, vouchers exacerbate that situation. And that's why we're reporting on this and why we want the community to know. Because I firmly believe that when people understand this issue, they realize that that's why I've been advocating and the rest of the board has been advocating so strongly that vouchers need to be funded a different way. And that's what we're really putting a lot of effort behind in trying to advocate at the state level, is for the state to fund vouchers directly and stop this deduction method from public schools. So I just want to make sure people understand that and understand that that is why we report on this, because we can't solve the problem unless people understand the problem. Because it's going to take a lot of us, and that means whether it's the board, whether it's staff, we're community members, whether you have children in the district or not, you need to be advocating for this to be funded a different way. Because that is the only way that public schools will be sustainable and the only way frankly, the voucher program will be sustainable. Because eventually, this is like a house of cards that's just going to collapse on itself. So having introduced the subject, I'm going to turn it over to Liz, who's going to present the subject with her team. So Superintendent Kirby.
Thank you, Jody. And I know that Caitlin will get ready to load the presentation. And as you said, this is a very important for our district. We know that one reason, the reason that we are in the fiscal challenges that necessitate a levy is due to the ever-changing legislation surrounding Ed Choice and its direct impact on the students and the families in our district. Tonight will be, I'll be joined with Scott, who's going to talk about the Ed Choice budget impacts. In addition, Sharon Roller, who is our EMIS coordinator, is really going to walk us through a brief history of Ed Choice, but also share our most updated numbers. This is something that we have been following very closely. Because as the legislation has changed over this past seven, eight, eight-month period, it's had a direct impact to our bottom line. In fact, I can tell you that one thing that I would do every week is to look at our Ed Choice Scholarship spreadsheet to see how much money we were losing every week as we approached the start of this particular school year. So the next slide, you'll see our presentation team for tonight. We'll start first with Sharon Roller, then Scott will talk about the budget impacts. And then I'm going to share some updates on advocacy and some things that we are working on. You can skip that next slide because Jody already framed this. We'll go right to the Ed Choice description. Sharon is going to take us through a brief history of Ed Choice. So Sharon, I'm going to turn it over to you, Sharon Roller.
Hi, everybody. Just a basic overview of the Ed Choice program as listed on the ODE website. There are actually two types of Ed Choice scholarships. There's the traditional Ed Choice scholarship. It is, the traditional is what we're used to, where the students are provided scholarships from designated public schools. And there's also the expansion scholarship, which are for students from low-income families, regardless of where they live. The funding source is the difference between these two types of programs. All of the data in our presentation will be based on the traditional Ed Choice program. The Ed Choice process starts with the release of report card data in September, while in a typical year when we have report card data to release in September. ODE will review certain criteria as defined by Ohio Revised Code to see if criteria is met in two of the previous three years. And which three years are used can vary based on safe harbor periods as defined in Ohio Revised Code. ODE then takes the criteria and produces a designation list that indicates which buildings are now eligible. Once this list is produced, the application window usually opens in February for the following school year. Students can begin to apply for scholarships. The applications will have a financial impact on the districts approximately one year after the release of the report card data in September. There have been some recent legislative changes that have an impact on the number of scholarships for our students in the district. In July of 2019, two main changes include a change to the application window deadline and a change to the eligibility criteria for high school students based on their address. In March of this year, we saw additional changes in House Bill 197, where the designation lists were frozen to the prior year's list, and new eligibility was added for siblings. In House Bill 166, we had a change to the application window. In prior years, there were two fixed application windows. One was in the spring that went from February to April, and the second was in July that closed at the end of July. So all scholarships were finalized before the start of the school year. House Bill 166 removed the end date on the July application period. Now, new scholarships can be awarded at any time throughout the school year. Also, in House Bill 166, we saw a change to the eligibility criteria for high school students. Resident students in grades eight through eleven, regardless of where they attend school, can now apply for a scholarship for high school for the following year. Since we only have one high school, once the high school became designated as an Ed Choice school, any student who lives in the district is now eligible to apply for a high school scholarship. The 2021 application year was to be the second year that the new Ohio State tests were used to determine eligibility after a safe harbor period. So using two years of the new OST results, we saw many new buildings and districts added to this list. In fact, two-thirds of the state would have at least one building, or 139 districts that have at least one designated building on the list. Legislators were having discussions that actually delayed the opening of the application window this past February. The result in one, House Bill 197, was a temporary freeze back to those who were designated in the prior year. The buildings already on the list, though, red, I'm sorry, the freeze helps the 281 districts and the 726 schools that would have been newly designated. However, for those who are already on the list, it's a disadvantage for those who see additional student applications. And also, they're unable to be removed from the list if their report card data improves. Another change in House Bill 197 was the change in eligibility criteria that now allows a student to be eligible as long as their sibling received a scholarship in the prior year. If a student lives in an area of a designated building, these siblings are eligible regardless of where they attended school. The following slides are going to show you our current count of scholarships and the impact of these legislative changes for our district. Here are the totals for this year as of October 1st. We have a total of seventeen hundred and ninety-two students with five hundred and fifty-two new applications, twelve hundred and forty renewals. You'll see that the majority of these new applications are for students in grades kindergarten and grade nine. This slide gives you a breakdown of the new kindergarten students, shows you a list of all of the schools who, where these students are actually attending for the hundred and ninety-five new kindergartens. This is a list of the new, I'm sorry, of all of the grade nine students and all the schools where they're attending. It includes a hundred and thirty-six new students and twenty-two whole renewals from the prior year. This slide shows you the students who actually have the most of the Ed Choice students. I'm only showing the top ten here just for the size of the screen. If you want to see the list for all of the schools, you can click on the link at the bottom of the presentation that will show you all schools that are receiving Ed Choice scholarship students. Here you'll see a breakdown by race of the number of students attending our district buildings and those who are receiving Ed Choice scholarships. The district totals include all students in grades K through 12, and the Ed Choice students will include all types of scholarships, the new and the renewals. The data included here on this slide only looks at the five hundred and fifty-two new applications and summarizes by the eligibility reason. So a student actually could fit into multiple categories, but ODE actually picks where they would have the best fit so that they could be in only one category. We see that the highest number of new applications are coming from incoming kindergarten students with a hundred and ninety-two. We have a hundred and forty-eight new high school students who are eligible based on the change in House Bill 166, hundred and forty-two new siblings, fifty-three students who have enrolled for the first time in Ohio, and seventeen students who either attended our district schools or are district residents who are attending a community school during nineteen-twenty. To put some numbers to these legislative changes, now that the July application window no longer has a closing date, so far we've seen sixty-one additional applications after the end of July as of October 1st. Now, the eligibility change for high school students can apply regardless of where they attend school. Since this went into place in July of last year, we had three hundred and eighteen scholarships for the nineteen-twenty school year. Two hundred and forty of these students returned from last year in our renewals for this year. In addition, we have a hundred and forty-eight new high school students for 2021. And we have the hundred and forty-two new siblings who are added for this year. So the impact of these legislative changes is actually split over two fiscal years, whereas the total of these, these changes is actually just a fraction of each year's total deduction. One of the questions I'm often asked is how many of these scholarship students have been enrolled in Cleveland Heights University Heights schools? To determine who's been enrolled in the district schools, I looked at all students who've been enrolled in our district in grades K through 12 in any of our buildings for any length of time. Students would have considered to have a prior enrollment as long as they attended one of our buildings before their application for Ed Choice. For example, if we had a student who was enrolled in kindergarten through third grade, they withdrew to a non-public school, and now they're back in a non-public for high school receiving Ed Choice scholarship, that student would have been included in my account as having a prior enrollment in the district. In addition, we have, now that we have the change for the July deadline, we have students who've applied this year during the school year. We had a student who enrolled for two weeks and decided to switch and apply for an Ed Choice scholarship. So even though that student was only enrolled for two weeks, I included that student as having a prior enrollment in the district. So when looking at these seventeen hundred and ninety-two scholarships for this school year, I found that there were ninety-three students, or 5.2%, who had a prior enrollment in the district. So ninety-four point eight percent have never attended our district schools. This slide, this slide shows a five-year history of those students who have been enrolled in our district. For each year, I reviewed the Ed Choice students enrollment history to look at their enrollments prior to their Ed Choice scholarship date. The blue line will show you the number of scholarship students who've never attended our district schools. The red indicate those who do have a prior enrollment in our district. You'll see that each year we have approximately ninety students who have attended in our district. I just want to note that those are not the same ninety students as we have new scholarship applications each year. And in fact, some of those students have returned to the district after they've been enrolled in the non-public schools. Scott, are you?
All right, thanks, Sharon. So I'm going to proceed a little bit with, to focus on the financial impacts that we've experienced based on the Ed Choice deduction. So I just want everyone to keep in mind that for a K-8 student, the deduction is $4,650. And for a student, grades 912, it's $6,000. Now, for fiscal 2021, the current school year, the total deduction based on the seventeen hundred and ninety-two students that Sharon mentioned is just over $9 million. And as she also mentioned, five hundred and fifty-two new applications, which for the school year, and that is, is 2.5 million. I want to make the point here, and that's why you see this, this is a total loss with zero additional state revenue. So remember that this school year and last school year are part of the state's biennial budget. So the state gives, you know, sets their funding for school districts and creates a biennial budget every two years. So the current biennial budget is last school year and this school year. And the amount of money that the state is giving us was frozen at the eighteen, nineteen level of funding. And in fact, it's not even truly frozen at that because you'll remember last year, at the end of the year, we had a $1.4 million reduction, and that same $1.4 million reduction this year. So not only is the state biennial budget frozen, but it's actually been reduced. So we're receiving no additional money for any of these new voucher students, but we are having the full amount deducted. And so as, as Jody kind of prefaced the whole presentation, that is kind of what, what our concern is, is that we're being deducted monies that is intended for the students to remain in our schools. And that if the state wants to fund vouchers, they should do so from a separate pot of money, kind of like they do with the Ed Choice expansion vouchers that Sharon mentioned.
Hey, Scott, I know, are you okay if you just take a question now?
Absolutely, yeah.
So can, can you go back to the last slide? So hypothetically, let's just say that one hundred kids, new kids, took a voucher or scholarship, one hundred new kids. What would be the impact of the district? I mean, we, we talk about a deduction, but we also, there's a misinformation campaign going on where people say that, oh, well, we're actually funded by a per-student account by the state. So if one hundred kids come in, even if they're not your student, there's going to be a state portion, and then there's going to be the portion that the district's going to have to pay. So this whole Ed Choice stuff that we're saying really isn't as much as, as, as it, as it, as we claim it really is. So I know you really, it's hard to do the math on a hundred kids, but if a hundred new kids would show up, would we get any additional state money?
We would not, and I've seen some of that, you know, that, that seems to be a common misunderstanding that, you know, because back before the state biennial budget was frozen and back before the district was on a cap, you know, there used to be, and those of you who may have seen some presentations previously for Ed Choice, you know, we would get a couple of thousand dollars per student in additional state funding, and then we would lose the forty-six fifty or the six thousand. So the difference between what we gained from the state and what we lost So the difference between what we gained from the state and what we lost is what has to be made up some other way, which would be local program taxes. Um, in your example, Jim, now this year and last year and the year before, we weren't getting any, any additional money whatsoever. So we get zero for that 100 kids, nothing, no additional state funding. But we're going to lose, say they're 100 kindergartners. We're going to deduct, we're going to lose 4650 per kindergartner. So that's half a million dollars. That we would, or if they were, you know, ninth graders, all ninth graders, that'd be $600,000. That we would lose in state funding. Funding that's intended for the students who are here at CHOH, but we wouldn't receive that additional money. So I've heard that same confusion also, and I think it's a point that needs to be cleared up. And I think people just maybe confuse, you know, that point in time when we used to get some amount of money uh, from the state versus what was deducted and now in the state where we are where we're getting nothing.
So there was a letter to the editor that is on the online part of the Heights Observer today. Um, and it was a rebuttal to a letter that Eric Silverman, one of our former board members wrote that basically said the seven some million dollars is really offset by four, four million of additional revenues that we actually get from the district. Um, so the Ed Choice is really that the four, the seven million minus the four. Um, that's not true.
That's correct.
That is not true. Um, and I think it's telling when you realize, and I use the example of 100. We had 500 some kids, um, use one of these vouchers for all sorts of reasons. Um, right and wrong are indifferent. 100% of those 500 new students are coming out of our budget. And it's not being reimbursed from the state in any way.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Mm-hmm.
Could I, could I chime in to one thing real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I just also wanted to point out that in the previous slide, you, um, you know, where you're mentioning the $1.4 million deduction that was made, that was taken back from the foundation money. Um, both last year as well as this coming year. That, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that was calculated in Columbus based on average daily membership, which is our, which is our, basically our enrollment. But I believe that the state actually calculated all of the Ed Choice students who reside in our district as part of our average daily membership. And so we were deducted for students who are using vouchers to, to attend a different school. So the $1.4 million was really, and next year's, this current year's will be another pile of salt on the wound um, of vouchers. And, and you know, and this is, um, you know, we can, we can try to bite our tongues all we want, but you know, this is, um, a, a political, social attack on schools like ours. Um, they're, they're, they've got their, their sights set on, on schools like, districts like ours, with students like ours. Um, there's nothing accidental about this whatsoever. So thank you very much, Scott.
Yeah, absolutely. And to your point, and you know, Liz and I both, um, you know, during the course of those deductions being announced or those reductions in state funding, uh, spoke with legislators and spoke with other districts and really tried to make them understand that that was happening because, you know, and you get the usual, oh, it's an unintended consequence or, you know, we really didn't think that through, but of that 1.4 million, 300,000 of that was specifically related to Ed Choice enrollment. And as you pointed out, there are students of 30 hours. So, you know, not only are we losing money out the door as the deduction goes, but we also had then this reduction in our overall state funding based on those same students. So it's, uh, it was unfortunate and we, we did try to advocate and I know Liz is going to speak to that at the end. Um, I'll send the advocacy efforts, but we tried to at least bring that to light and make sure that people understood what was happening, but obviously didn't result in a change in methodology as we had hoped. Okay. So the next slide we have here is just an attempt to kind of show the, the growth over time. And really, you know, when you speak with people and, and kind of back to Jim's point, you know, I, I know people aren't, aren't necessarily either hearing and understanding, or maybe they're just not believing, um, the district and what we're saying. So I would highly encourage you to speak, you know, give a call to ODE and, and just pose the question, you know, say, we had 500 new Ed Choice vouchers in my district, Cleveland Heights, this year. Did we, did we get any money for them and, and, uh, but did we, did we lose the whole deduction amount? And we'll verify that for you. And so, you know, even when we speak with ODE these days, they're, they're just, I think they even are surprised at the, at the, uh, growth of, of Ed Choice vouchers in our district. So, you know, you can see in 2017, we're at 2.2 million and just in five years, how now in 2021, um, again, largely based on some of these recent legislative changes that Sharon spoke about, we're over $9 million in deductions and that is just, it's crazy. And, and people just, um, have a hard time kind of wrapping their heads around that. And I think that that's one of the reasons that sometimes you'll hear, you know, Cleveland Heights University referred to us as the poster child of what's happening with Ed Choice and, and how this is really negatively impacting funding for political students in a way that again, the legislature claims they didn't have. So this slide is again, kind of a, another way to try to visually represent the fact that the top line is the state funding that we receive, the formula foundation funding. So you see in 2017, we were 20, you know, 20 million, 71,395. Went up to 20 million, 699 in 2018. Peak at 21,307, uh, 455 in 2019. So that fiscal 2019 school year, that was the one that we were supposed to be frozen at that level for 20 and 21. So that really should have been a flat line across those three years. But again, you see that $1.4 million dip in 2020, when the state at the end of last year suddenly said, we don't have enough money for you due to COVID. We're going to have to take 1.4 million. So we dropped to 19, 891, and that's where we are for this year as well. But correspondingly, you see the same level of growth in the deduction for vouchers. So this is, is a way to kind of represent, look, if, you know, if there was this, if the argument was true that Jim brought up, that as we're seeing more voucher enrollment, we should be seeing more state funding. We're not, we're actually seeing less. So, so you can see that not only is, are we flatlined at the top there with how much money we're getting from the state. It's been slightly reduced, yet that, that twist deduction continues to grow significantly. So this next slide I put in here and I, I know everyone can read it themselves, but I'm going to read it real quick because I want to make the point. So this timely, uh, so Ohio Association of School Business Officials, one of the statewide uh, groups that we belong to, along with OSBA and BASSA and all those other organizations that really help us with advocacy. They just in their SBO Quarterly Magazine for September of 2020 had this important points to highlight for your community and legislators around Ed Choice. So the points being that local property, excuse me, local property tax dollars are being used to fund performance-based Ed Choice scholarships. And while the state may, may provide some portion of the cost of voucher, and that was before the state funding freeze, a local school district must make up the difference with the proceeds from local property tax levies. Therefore, in districts that receive very little in state aid to pay for vouchers, local property taxes or again, as when everyone in the state is in a freeze situation, local property taxes cost. Um, a growing number of students who attend private schools and have never been enrolled in public school are qualifying for performance-based Ed Choice scholarships paid for by the local school district. You saw that in the numbers that Sharon provided specifically for us. Uh, once a student obtains a performance-based Ed Choice scholarship, that student continues to receive a voucher throughout his or her education, K through 12. Even if the district's report card improves and the reason that we weren't getting, you know, we're put in Ed Choice status to begin with, even if we get out, um, that student can continue to keep that voucher through the entirety of their career. According to data collected by the ODE and also study done by Thomas Fordham Foundation, there is no evidence that students taking a voucher do better than students in public schools that they leave. Private schools are able to select which students they accept and public schools must accept all students. And also private schools are not required to administer the same state test as their public school counterparts, nor are they required to undergo fiscal audits, even though they accept public funds. So it's just some, I think, important points, um, that, that professional organizations statewide, but certainly we would believe that, you know, our community and our legislators need to know in terms of Ed Choice. And then the next slide we have here is just, uh, so, you know, Dr. Howard Fleeter, he's an economist in Columbus area, um, school finance consultant. He's very well-known, uh, in the school community. And actually, um, Sharon Roller and I have been working with Dr. Fleeter recently, Jan Ressiger, another community member who's very, you know, a big advocate in most of her school funding and school finance. Um, actually had him reach out and, uh, and, and connect with us. And he wants to advocate on our behalf, um, in Columbus for, uh, for our Ed Choice situation. So we've been providing data to him, uh, which, you know, again, I know Liz is going to speak on this. But I did pull this quote in that we have out on the district website, um, when he first looked at our situation. If Cleveland Heights isn't losing in students, they're, they're just losing money to get a choice situation. And, and that again, is shown in the data that Sharon provided of student enrollment and how many of the students who are taking Ed Choice vouchers actually got enrolled in our schools at any point in their career. So that is it for my part and I will turn it over to Liz.
Thank you, Scott. Um, I'm really struck by all this information, but particularly the graph that shows the blue line and the red line approaching each other. Um, that really speaks to my experience as a superintendent. Um, when I get together with other districts across the state and we start talking about the impact of Ed Choice, time after time, people will look at me with great chagrin and great sympathy because what's happening to our district in particular is unbelievable. People really cannot believe, uh, the impact we have. It's the heaviest impact of Ed Choice on our bottom line budget. Um, and so to address that, we have been engaged, um, the district and the board in particular has been engaged in quite a few, quite a few advocacy efforts, especially as we started to see these changes even last summer. Um, and so I wanted to put everything on one slide. Um, in that first, that first bullet point, you'll see some of the legislative efforts that are currently floating around Columbus right now. Now I will say, um, folks are pretty distracted right now due to the national election. There was some legislation that was, um, starting to circulate amongst some of the Senate and House committees in the fall. Um, so you'll see their House Bill, uh, 385, um, Senate Bill 305 slash sub bill 305. Um, and those do, uh, different types of things. For example, House Bill 385 seeks to provide legislative relief, official legislative relief for state testing and the subsequent report card, uh, consequences that come from state testing. Um, one reason that one, one example of this really being stuck and frozen at this point is the fact that districts across the state had to engage in beginning of the year testing for their primary students, had to engage in third grade testing because there was no movement. There's been no movement on this downstate, although everyone knows that for every district, this is a really unique year. You'll also see, um, some, some amendments, um, that include things like making sure if there is another cut that happens to Ed Choice districts, um, that is, that is proportional. We don't have that huge impact that we had last year where the students who were Ed Choice students were counted in our cut. Um, some amendments are looking at ways to help those districts that are in academic distress, um, have an opportunity to exit out. Um, and also to provide some, some relief to those districts who are, um, don't have the opportunity to earn their way, to earn their way out of Ed Choice because there, there is, there was no testing last year and it's not clear what's going to happen this year. Um, and then there's also, you'll see in both of those legislative bills, a real focus on the deduction and who pays for it, which is what our focus is as well. We really want, uh, the state to take the responsibility for, for paying for these vouchers so that districts, district funds are not negatively impacted. Some of the other, other advocacy efforts that we've been engaged in, um, connected, collected to this, you know, right before we had the COVID pandemic that hit, we joined, um, hundreds of districts that were downstate testifying about Ed Choice expansion. We had board members, both Scott and I, we had parents, we had students, um, down really talking about the negative impact in their districts. Um, we also, even this fall, right before, um, the both houses kind of took a pause, were testifying on behalf of, um, Senate Bill, Senate Bill 305. We also, as Scott has indicated, have continued to engage with state legislatures, legislators. So we've been in contact with state, state representative, state representative Boyd and state Senator Sandra Williams. We even have some engagements happening this week, um, around this, this topic. The board, as you all will recall, did make a decision, uh, last spring to pursue a legal path. And so those that work is still, um, happening. Um, we're trying to work with other districts as well because this is something that impacts so many districts across the state. Uh, first week, first ring continues in its advocacy. So we have a group of superintendents that are meeting weekly to really find some common ground and some common strategy on how to address, um, Ed Choice and its impact that it's having in districts. A lot of the challenges that we have, they, they have as well. Um, and then finally, uh, we do, uh, have some community advocacy that we are going to be planning after, uh, the November election where there'll be more focus downstate. Uh, so we really want to get all of our community on board to really push for changing, uh, the deduction model. So it's not a direct deduct from districts. As Jody said, um, you know, this is really a, we know that our, that we have a diverse community. That is something that we value greatly. Um, but also this model is not sustainable. It's not sustainable for those people who are those, those families and also those schools that rely on the scholarships. And it's not sustainable for our district and therefore our community as well. Um, and so we'll continue to use all of our legislative and advocacy options in order to fight this, in order to educate, um, educate folks about this and to really get a coalition so that we can get this changed for, for the district. I mean, I really just think that this presentation shows how quickly Ed Choice can get out of control. And now we are to the point where, um, we are making massive, massive cuts in our budget just so that, uh, we can stay afloat, um, and serve our students. So now we have, um, time for, uh, board questions and comments.
Liz, I have a question. Um, and I think this is for Sharon, but so since July, we said we have, since there's no ending period anymore, we've had 61 applications?
Yes.
So just by my math, that means since July, we are now being deducted, if they were all the K through eight or if they were all through the K through eight, it would be $283,650. And if they were all high school, it would be $366,000. So it'd be somewhere in between there. But that's my question. Now my comment is, how are school districts supposed to be able to budget? And this is a rhetorical question. I certainly don't expect you to be able to answer this one, Sharon. But it's more of a discussion point for Scott and Liz and the rest of the board. There's no way to plan or budget if you have no idea with these rolling, um, enrollment periods where people can apply at any time. And we've already seen from July until now, we're in October, another somewhere between $283,000 and $366,000. To me, when the state, you know, requires us to have a five-year forecast and the state itself only has a two-year budget, but we have this open, it's almost like having somebody being able to write checks on your checkbook constantly and you have no way to stop that.
Well, right. We have, we have no control over our revenue, but we have to have a balanced budget for five years. I mean, you couldn't do that with your family budget. You need to know what's coming in in order to figure out how to spend what's going out. And we are in this impossible position, Jody. You're absolutely right.
Yeah. And then even looking at Sharon's bar chart that had the blue and the red of the number of kids who've never attended our school. When you see that only 90, you know, roughly 90 kids per year, that to me says, you know, the whole premise of Ed Choice was originally supposed to be to allow kids to leave a failing school. These are not kids fleeing a failing school. These are kids who never intended to come here anyways. And I'm fine with that from their perspective, but it should not be deducted from our budget. The state should be paying for this directly.
I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I, um, if I can pick up from there, and, and this really is an extension of what Jody was just saying that, you know, when my oldest sister attended, um, what was then St. Anne's School, that money came out of my parents' pocket and not, not the Cleveland Heights Schools budget. So, um, Sharon, um, one sort of data point that I would, I'm wondering if you can provide to us is, um, we have the number of students uh, at each, each grade level, et cetera, who are taking, um, who are using vouchers. I would like to see that that broken down is in terms of households. So if, if we can, if we can work on that. Um, and then also, um, you know, i- it's really interesting to me as, as Scott was, um, going through the impact on the budget, that it really occurred to me that over the past few years, Cleveland Heights University Heights, public school students have had their, their funding cut um, as a result of the economic downturn, um, coming from COVID. But it's really interesting that vouchers users have not their funding, their state funding has not been cut as a result of COVID. Their state funding has not been cut. It is only the state funding of public school students. And I think that that's a really important piece. And, you know, as we, as we talked just sort of in terms of a, you know, a personal statement, I actually don't think, um, and I'm, I'm one member not speaking for the board. Um, but I actually do not believe that this money should, um, should be funded directly by the state. Uh, and I, I really want to, for what it's worth, go on record with that. Um, I believe that the Ohio State Constitution says clearly that local school boards have an obligation to provide a thorough and efficient education, public, public education. And vouchers of any form that take public money um, and, and send that money to private institutions necessarily depletes what is left in the state budget for the public education of Ohio's public school students, therefore diminishing our opportunity to deliver our constitutionally mandated requirements of a thorough and efficient education. So I do not think that, that we should be encouraging the state to fund these, um, from the public budget whatsoever. I think that when families decide that private schools are the right fit for their child, as my parents decided for my sister, that is a decision that the family should make based on their, their needs and their budget and work with the school to, um, to come to an agreement on a, on a fair, um, tuition. But with ninety-five percent of these vouchers being used by students who have never graced our hallways, the narrative, as Jody mentioned, is wrong. These students are not escaping a failing public school. These families are merely escaping a tuition bill. That is what needs to change. Thank you.
So Dan, on a certain point, I agree with you. I mean, the year that I sent one of my children to parochial school, we wrote a check and it was hard, but it was a decision we made at the time that we thought was the best thing for him then in his scholastic life. There's nothing wrong with sending your child to private school if that's what you want to do, but it does come with certain responsibilities, like finding the money to pay for it. And our students are suffering because of these vouchers, because they take away from the money that's left for the public school students. So I think I agree with you.
Yeah, well, Dan, you know, I'm, I agree with you too, but I mean, I think there's a point where everybody has to look at the reality of the situation. It comes down to the fact that public school funding uh, by the state has always been, uh, tenuous, which is why every school district at a certain time has to put a school levy on the ballot. And here, the, the, the state throws more sort of unfunded mandates on us where we're essentially paying for these scholarships. Um, and I'm back on the slide with the blue line and the red line. I mean, that is, I mean, that's, I, I mean, you know, here we are negotiating contracts for years to come right now. Um, people on the other end of the table refer to us as greedy. Um, yeah, we've seen those posts, um, and completely ignoring the fact that we're getting, I mean, I, I wish we had the money. We just don't. I mean, and it's, it's terrible. Um, we're going to have to find a way to even make more than the two million in cuts that I see in the five-year forecast that we have to make in fiscal year twenty-two. Um, thank you for the slide. I know we've thought about closing buildings. We've talked about, uh, you know, deeper cuts to staff. I mean, these are all things that we're going to have to put on the table. And what's really shocking is when we went from last year to this year, if you look at that red slide, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's around a, a, a two million dollar change. So here the legislation went through the state. So well, we're just not going to make any changes to this Ed Choice thing this year. We're going to punt another year. Well, them punting another year has cost us two million dollars. I mean, and then they cut our budget on top of it. So. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, it's also, you know, you know, they punted. Remember when, when we had our levy on the ballot, um, this past spring? And, um, the folks who were, um, against the levy insisted, oh no, you know, the legislature is going to fix this. It, it's on their radar. They're going to fix it. So you, we're, they're not even sure if they're going to need the money because the legislature is going to fix it. And we kept saying to folks, don't hold your breath. They haven't fixed it over the past five years. It's unlikely that they're going to fix it in the next month. And sure enough, as you say, perfectly said, it punted.
Yeah, we see how that turned out.
Yeah. And so, um, you know, we just can't rely on the legislature as it is currently made up. Um, you know, Ohio's gerrymandered districts that do not reflect the population of the state um, have got the system rigged and it's rigged for students who don't look like ours.
Well, you can go back to slide fifteen. Nathan is doing that. I mean, you, you can just sort of seek a quick little metric. Is that slide fifteen? It's the one with the pie chart.
Pie chart.
Showing he's using the voucher. Yep.
That is a damning and clear slide, I'm afraid. And there is no, there's no justifying that. You can't just, you can't avoid staring at that.
Seventy percent of Ohio vouchers are used by students in forty school districts. Those forty school districts are almost all majority, minority and/or majority poverty. Seventy percent of the vouchers, forty school districts, come from forty school districts, almost all of which are majority, minority and/or majority poverty. This system is designed that way. There is no such thing as an unintended consequence when the pattern has been clear year after year after year. It's an intended consequence. And shame on any legislature who votes to institute these things and won't own the ramifications of their legislation. Not everybody's as lucky to have legislators like we do.
You know, I also look at this whole voucher thing as performance-based and this sort of goes back to what you initially said, Jody, which is, I mean, the whole premise of Ed Choice is to give people a choice so they don't have to go to a failing school. I mean, how many people did we hear when we were testifying in Columbus that they had to escape a failing school to go to, and it all, they were all religious schools that, that, that were there? It's kind of a pathetic argument, isn't it? When you actually look at, you know, our school is deemed failing and only five, you know, five percent essentially of the vouchers that are being used are coming out of, I mean, those people are fleeing what they feel like is a failing school. And that just tears apart communities. So here we are, you get this label as, oh, you're at a poor performing school. Um, and we know it's, it's rigged. I mean, we've, we pointed that out on multiple presentations. I mean, not necessarily on the one this evening. Um, but we know the system's rigged. We know, we know the report card isn't necessarily accurate when it comes to, you know, marking a school as failing. I think everybody was surprised when you had school districts like, um, uh, Solon, for example. I can't tell you how many people flee Cleveland Heights to go to Solon because they're afraid of the schools. Um, Solon had a school on the Ed Choice list. Oh, really? So now they don't use performance as a measure anymore. They're using income. And the income measure is so high, basically, you know, anybody that wants to use a voucher is still is able to use a voucher. I really don't have anything else to say.
Well, and the truth of the matter is, is that these families don't even know the same information about the schools that they're entering because they're not subject to the same testing regimen as we are. So you can't even pretend to use the fleeing of a failing school to go to a better school because the better school doesn't take the same tests. You know, so as Scott said, they don't take the tests and they're not, they're not subject to the same um, accountability and, and bookkeeping practices that we are. So again, there's, there's no accidents here. This is all intentional.
So, you know, we have a lot of people that communicate with us during this meeting. And I just got a text and I really do think we need, I need to make, to, to reference it is, you know, how do you improve performance with the kind of cuts that we have to make in order to substantiate this? We've got to make cuts at all different levels, buildings levels, employee levels, staff levels, you know, which is what we're in the process of doing. How is that going to support, uh, increasing performance? So if the state is saying that we're a poor performing district, how are all these things going to help performance? And I think that's the rhetorical question is it's not. Um, it's going to make us a little less than what we are today.
And the state hasn't even given us a mechanism to get out. There's, there's no, there's literally not, there's not an exit ramp that has been given to us to, to, to show that we deserve to get out. They, they literally haven't, they haven't presented us an exit.
Correct. The state has been totally quiet on that. Um, there has been very little discussion or movement. As I said, people are waiting until after, uh, the election in the next couple of weeks. Um, I anticipate that, um, December, um, probably even late November, we're going to see a lot more activity around Ed Choice expansion because that same group of four hundred plus districts, the two hundred, almost three hundred plus that would be added, um, that had the freeze last year are going to be facing this, the exact same situation. Um, and then to the point, Jim's point on the improvement, um, I can't tell you how many lost opportunities in terms, um, of support for students, um, that those numbers represent. Nine million dollars represents really a handcuffing of the district to improve and to really deliver, um, on the vision for the students. We have been creative. We have made really difficult cuts. Um, but it is, it's, it really has placed us in a, in such a challenging situation, which is, um, you know, why we had to, uh, put the levy on the ballot. And that's just to, to get us, you know, past for survival perspective.
So also just, uh, to, and I know that we probably want to wrap this up, but to, to, um, extend what, what, um, Liz Kirby was just saying, you know, that with all these districts, just an update on the lawsuit. We have over forty school districts from around the state have signed on with the lawsuit at this, at this juncture. Um, we put out an RFP for legal representation. We got, um, as you can imagine, some of the most prominent, um, education law firms in the state who filled out those RFPs and we are going to be, um, conducting face-to-face interviews with those law firms, um, in the next week, um, leading up to, uh, making a decision on which, which firm will be representing the lawsuit moving forward very soon.
That's good news, Dan. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think we, we, I mean, we probably need to have a meeting when we talk a little, talk about this a little bit more. I'm going to make sure the community understands that we're not footing the bill for this. I mean, this is a consortium that's being built of school districts, including Cleveland Heights. And I know we have some, uh, influence in how some of these decisions are being made and how it's going to be attacked. You know, mostly so, we are so, uh, disproportionately affected by this than most other school districts. But pretty much every other school district realizes that we're sort of a bellwether to what's going to happen. Um, and this is what, you know, comes down to Jody's comment about the sustainability of this. You take a voucher today, there's not going to be money tomorrow to, to pay that. Um, I mean, I mean, we, I mean, if all of a sudden we had another fifteen hundred people take a voucher or two thousand people take vouchers, I mean, it's going, it will wreak havoc in our district, but it's also, there's not any money left to pay for all the people that want to use the vouchers. Um, you know, that's what Short, Short cited about this. Um, so in the meantime, you're killing the public schools and then everybody's going to be trying to use the voucher to go to their private school and there's not going to be any money there. Cause there just isn't enough.
You're absolutely right, Jim. And just for the record, so the community knows, we're losing over nine million dollars a year to, to vouchers at this point. Our participation in the lawsuit costs us two dollars per student. So we're talking about around ten thousand dollars a year. It's, it's, it's not dimes for dollars. It's pennies on the dollar.
Well, I think everyone in this community should be angry that we get labeled with the F, with the failing because we know our community is not failing. We know our schools are not failing. And for, you know, whatever reason, you're against vouchers or think that we shouldn't, you know, the state shouldn't fund them, that's up to you. I just want to see this situation change for our district and for other districts. I can't solve all the problems, but, um, if it's one of the things that we can stop this flood of money leaving our school district, that's what I'm focused on. And that's what I think needs to happen. And if that needs to happen by changing the way that these things are funded, then I'm on board with that. I'm on board with whatever it takes to make sure that we can shore up our community because frankly, that's what I care about. There's so many people in our community that now are relying on this and so many jobs and so many other schools. I, I'm just frightened as to the impact this could have on our community if, if the whole system collapses. And I really think that the whole system is headed that way, particularly when you look at the slide that Sharon showed about how many school districts are going to be going into this in the next year. I mean, it's not just what's happening in our community is going to be happening across the state and that's when the house of cards is going to collapse. So I think we should move on to the next item on our agenda. I know there's a lot of people who are watching that, um, want to know about the reopening update. So I'm going to move us on to that topic. So with that, Liz, do you want?
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, so our next presentation for tonight, we're going to provide an update on, um, where we are with our instructional models as we get ready to enter quarter two. Um, as, uh, you all know, I did send out a communication uh, to all community stakeholders, to our, um, administrators, teachers, uh, families, um, with my recommendation, some updates on some things that are happening, but my recommendation that we start with my recommendation, some updates on some things that are happening, but my recommendation that we start quarter two remotely. So today I'm just going to provide an update on where we are in terms of our planning. So you kind of get the scope of what we've been doing from the start of the year. Again, that is my recommendation to start remotely. We'll, we'll share some, some feedback from the advisory group. And we're going to start actually just with some attendance data so you have a sense of how things are going academically. Now, I will say that we will have more information, especially as relates to grade performance in an upcoming work session. We are nearing the end of the quarter. And so I didn't want to share anything prior to giving teachers and, you know, students the opportunity to finish shouting for teachers to assess where students are too as well. I believe Allison Byrd, is she, she on this call?
I am here, yes.
Allison has been providing weekly data to principals and schools so that they have a sense of where schools are in terms of attendance. So I just wanted Allison just to share some trends out here. So we have a good sense of where, what's happening with attendance this year.
Certainly. So before the start of the school year, we reunit revised our attendance practices in preparation for both the remote environment and the hybrid learning models. We wanted to make sure that we were connecting with every single student every day as if they were a part of face-to-face instruction. And one way for us to, to look at that, at the implementation of those practices is to review students' attendance rates. So we're looking at, excuse me, what's considered in that is the number of students who should be attending and participating out of the number of, excuse me, those who are participating out of those who are enrolled. And so you see that attendance rate monitored each week from the very beginning of the school year to the current, current date or current week. For comparison's sake, you can view the attendance rates for the 19, 20 school years. So when we were in face-to-face instruction prior to our COVID experience as a comparison. And so one of the questions that I'm often asked is what it's, what's a good number? You know, how do we know if we are on track? And so the Ohio Department of Education identifies satisfactory attendance rates at anything over 95%.
Thank you, Allison. So next I'm going to ask our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, Felicia Gould, just to take us through the planning that we've been engaged in since early August.
I'm mute, Felicia.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is our draft planning phases as we have moved toward quarter two. We started right after the recommendation from the board to go remote. So in week one, we looked at our Chromebook distribution. We did some training. We tried to work with our students who we were concerned about in the spring. So we had a math camp as well as a springboard collaborative that works with our primary students around literacy. In week two, we continue to do Chromebook distribution. And I will say that we've had about 22 plus Chromebook distributions to make sure that our families had technology for our remote start. We continued with more training. And we also worked with making sure that our curriculum materials were there for the staff prior to them returning to school. In week three, this is where our staff returned to work. We had our new teacher orientation. We also had teachers returning. And we began with our PPS training for our counselors and social workers, which is around our Say Yes initiative. And we also had convocation that week. Beginning the week four is when we did the district professional development that we have shared around the different areas of curriculum. We talked about our safety protocols. We discussed technology, helping staff members prepare for the remote environment. And we also held our parent orientations and beginning to look at our staggered kindergarten starts. Now we are in the planning phases of week five through nine, and this is where we are now. We surveyed our staff and our parents about the implementation of remote learning. And we have shared that information with all of our reopening committees. Our reopening committee also reconvened the week of August 5th through the 9th. Both committees, there is an elementary committee and there is a secondary committee. It is comprised of not just teachers, but also people from the operations, HR, food services, custodial. They're all represented on those group. We met weekly during the summer and we have began to start meeting weekly again, whether it be the entire committee or a subcommittee. In week seven, the information was shared with our PTA council and the superintendent informed stakeholders about the recommendation that she shared at the beginning of the presentation. In week eight, the reopening committees, we have reconvened again and we are here tonight here at the work session for the board. And week nine, we have our upcoming parent conferences that will take place on the 29th for elementary beginning. And on the 30th, we will have a site-based professional development day and records day for our secondary schools. And October 30th ends our quarter one. So this is a draft planning of going along with what we have completed and how we are moving forward to quarter two. And for the week of November 2nd, we will be reconvening our elementary subcommittee that will be discussing elementary learning models based on the board's decision on, based on the superintendent's recommendation to the board. And then the decision based on the Board of Education happens that week. And we will continue doing planning for whatever setting that we are in based on our health advisory levels.
Here you will see the most recent health advisory county risk level as of last week. Before I talk a bit about this, I do want to share that we actually had been, as a county, in level two, which is an orange level since we started the school year. So it'd been at least seven straight weeks of, of an orange level. I am one of, one of many superintendents who are in a weekly meeting with the County, Cuyahoga County Board of Health, getting updates on what's happening as it relates to COVID spread in the county. I can tell you that this was definitely a surprise to everyone last week when Cuyahoga County went red. And we will also note that the state itself is starting to see increases in multiple counties in, in Ohio. And so after receiving this information and after speaking with the Board of Health several times, I did decide to use their framework as a, as a, as a veranda to make the recommendation that we remain remote to start the second quarter. I do want to underscore that my recommendation, I'm not making a recommendation on how long remote learning should be. My recommendation is that we start remote. You can go to the next slide, Kaitlin. And you'll see here that this is aligned with the Board of Health guidance. I did put an asterisk by level two because there has been some changes in the guidance even from, from the summer where they have indicated that students in schools and small groups is something that aligns with the recommendation in level two. But the reason for the bulk of the bulk of, bulk of students during level three that they recommend a remote learning model is just the number of students in the building. And when you have, you know, hundreds and hundreds of kids in the building, that increases the risk of exposure. Smaller groups are more manageable for sure. And we have right now a very, very small group of students that are currently in the building. And so just to give a little bit more information, to share what, share what we've learned about our current COVID numbers. The reason we went red last year was because, we, last week, I'm sorry, is because we hit five out of the seven indicators. The Board of Health has noted that they're seeing this spread in particular with social gatherings. And that aligns with the messaging from the governor. They don't see school, school openings as the source of the spread. Schools are reporting cases. I mean, as of last week, there were 29 schools that had recorded COVID cases so far. But even in those instances, it's difficult to, to trace a, trace a case back to a student was in a class and that's where the exposure, the exposure happened. They are certainly though seeing just kind of like the social decisions that people are making right now is driving numbers in the state and quite frankly, across the country. I already mentioned the guidance, the in-person services, the asterisks on the previous slide. I specifically asked about the work that we're doing with our intensive special education students that are in the MDN autism classes. And they indicated, both, I spoke with them last week, when I spoke with them Monday and when I spoke with them today, that providing those, those services aligned to their protocols is, is aligned to their recommendations. The other thing I wanted to share was that districts are taking really different approaches to these levels. And, and people will start to see this as you hear about different reopening plans or continued plans. So there's some districts when they got the, when they learned of the level three designation, decided to continue with in-person instruction. There are some districts where they heard about the level three designation, decided to continue with a hybrid or blended model. There are some districts where they heard that, kind of took a pause and said, well, we need to, to really make some decisions and some recommendations to our board in terms of what we want to do next. And so it's really, the, the response has been varied. I, actually, I think that's unfortunate because I think, you know, many districts are in a challenging situation because the state, you know, has decided to kind of put that decision on, on communities and districts. And we know that, you know, boundaries don't, there's, you know, boundaries are really artificial. And we have people moving across, you know, multiple communities as well. So kind of something more consistent would be helpful. I will say that the guidance is appreciated because at least it gives us something that we can look to as it relates to, to decision-making. And so that's just a bit about where we are in the county. And again, my recommendation is to, to start the year remotely. I did want to share some feedback from the advisory group. So we did look at the planning notes and the planning recommendations and questions that have come from the multiple committees that are working on our different instructional models. So for the operations department, you know, we do have our cleaning protocols. We have our equipment in place. You know, we're, you know, we have things we've already started to implement because we do have students back in the building. So there are suggestions around instructional videos, additional instructional videos to help families and to help students to get ready for a return when that is decided. Thinking through how to use outdoor space creatively when that's possible. We have some processes in place already that folks have noted are helpful with indicating when cleanliness is needed. A kudos to food service and how well that has gone. And then thinking through how we, the arrival and dismissal and the schedules in particular. On the educational side of the district, there were concerns about teaching remotely and live simultaneously. I will say that many, many parents have indicated that as we consider switching to another instructional model, they really want to have as much continuity as possible with their, their student and their current teachers. So we're thinking through what that could look like so we can keep that connection, connection there, knowing that, that, that there are challenges that presents. There is definitely a concern about equity when we look at the performance of minority students and students with disabilities. Even when we look at the attendance data across the district, we see that disparity in the weekly attendance data. That's a conversation that we've been having with principals as we've been looking at data, data and seeing what kind of intervention we want to put in place around that. Expectations for attendance, we want to make sure that those are clear too, because this is such a, a new model. We want to make sure that it is accurate and consistent. There was, there was a discussion about incentives for students. And also, you know, we've heard from parents for sure that they're really concerned about their students and their, their ability to have social interaction and face-to-face interaction with their teachers and peers. And then finally, more parent input on what they want to see moving forward. One thing that we will continue to do, we will continue to have the committee's plan. So planning is, planning continue this week, it will continue next week. And so one thing that we want to make sure that we do as we look at the different models for, for blended learning. And then as we get feedback from the committees, as we get feedback from the teachers, we also need to make sure from the parent perspective that we're clear on the kind of blended models that are going to be feasible for the district. And also give them enough advance notice so that they can plan, plan accordingly. We've seen lots of different hybrid models. And I know we've shown some samples early in earlier presentations to families too. But since we are going to be delaying the start, we're thinking through ways that we can connect with families so we can hear, hear more about their needs. And also, you know, measure those needs against what we're able to coordinate at the district level too. So we did also add a parent representative to our advisory group. That was a suggestion that came from our PTA council. I do want to thank our PTA council who also gave excellent feedback that I have since shared with, with the committee on things to consider as we transition to a hybrid model. So in terms of our next steps, again, we're going to continue to plan in preparation. We'll continue to monitor the COVID levels. We will have another report coming out this week. And then as we plan for what remote, as we plan for what quarter two could look like, we'll institute a planning cycle. We want to really pay attention to how much notice we give both teachers and staff once we make our recommendation to the board on what we think that model should be. And we'll incorporate that timing and those timelines in our planning as we move forward. And so, you know, I really ask the committees to, you know, just continue. We know that my recommendation is that we do not start hybrid. But I want the committees to continue to plan as if we're going to be starting right away. So, you know, there are additional, you know, discussions that we want to have. We want to look at models, we want to see if there's any additional staffing needs. We're looking at there's, there's additional PPE that we want to get. I think we have, you know, we're on the top of the list in terms of PPE with area districts. But we want, again, to see what else we have that we can get to make sure that we are keeping everyone as safe as possible. And so that is our update for, for quarter two. And now I will end for questions.
Liz, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And I just wanted to thank our special ed teachers who are providing the in-person services for our most intensive needs students. It's about 67 students. And I, I just want to really thank them. We met with them today and it was very interesting to hear, you know, what's working, what could be better. You know, what their concerns are and, and where they think that they're making successes. I think that, you know, it is, the amount of care that they have for our students was really, that really came through for me. And I just want to make sure that I thank them because I know that they've been doing a very difficult job under incredibly challenging circumstances.
I agree. I have, I've seen really, I've learned a lot actually, just in visiting the classes, especially during this time period around how teachers work with students, the challenges of doing that in a COVID-19 environment, the different needs of students, the different, you know, even amongst the MDAU population of students, how those are different. The difference between a kindergartner and a high school student is different. And, and it's just really just great efforts on behalf of the staff. We have some follow-up for them and I'll, and I'll be following up with them from our meeting today.
I, I'd like to piggyback on that. And I know there's a lot of concern from our staff members and families that are part of that. I, I would be okay seeing firsthand how that's working in, working out. I don't know if there's a way that, you know, we've done some board visits. But I'd like to see firsthand because I think this is, I mean, I think the ultimate goal is to go back at some point in time when there's a level of comfort and we know that we're not going to be contributing to a health emergency by getting a lot of people sick that we're sending, you know, to our emergency rooms. But I would like to, I, I would like to get some more information on, on that subset of staff and students. But I would like to, I, I would like to get some more information on, on that subset of staff and students. I know it was difficult, Liz, there was the email that was sent out that set the expectation this past week that we were going to go back and then all of a sudden we went red. And then it almost just seemed as if we were switching gears and staying remote. I think everybody needs to understand is, you know, we are treating this almost day to day. Well, let's say week to week, you know, trying to get a sense of when we feel that we are comfortable enough, you know, exposing our kids and our teachers while also balancing their educational needs. And you know, I know the goal is to go back, but we also have to be real careful in as what I think you mentioned, the, the amount of notice that we give our parents. I think people felt whiplashed a little bit. I mean, we have a lot of parents that want to go back. We have a lot of staff members that are very concerned about safety. We have parents that are concerned about safety and we have options for those parents that are concerned about safety and staying remote. But I think we need to have a little bit clearer understanding of when we are going to be making decisions. And at this point, erring on the, you know, erring on the side of safety, I think is where we have to be because this, this situation is all new to us and, and new to our staff. We talk about, you know, we've gotten a lot of emails. Some of them have been from staff members that have basically said, remote learning is going great. Don't switch it right now because we're not going to be safe. So focusing on that first piece, I mean, I really would like to try to see some data to better understand when people say that remote learning is going great. I, I really want to understand, is it or is it not? So whatever you can do to help us, you know, set some benchmarks or get a better sense of, of that would be helpful. There's going to be a point where that's going to have to get factored into our decision-making process. But it can't be if we feel it's great. I mean, I've gotten a lot of feedback from some parents that it is indeed going great. We've also gotten feedback where it's challenging for families. So I'd like to get a better sense of what that's all about. And then finally, the work that was done to get Wiley, you know, back in. And, you know, I mean, it's essentially is or going to be utilized for having just sort of a place where students can work remotely. Can we get a little bit more information on that and how that's working out? And if there's more things that we can do to help our parents that are having a difficulty coping with this, you know, work remotely, you know, they have to work remotely as in the parents have to work remotely. You know, how can we, I mean, is there other things that we can do to provide a better experience for, for these kids while still staying remote?
Yeah, I, I think that, that's also something that, that I want the committees to explore. Because I do think we need to, to think through other things in red that we can potentially do. We don't know how long, you know, we'll be in red. There's some indication that some of those indicators take a while to drop off if they even do improve. And, you know, there, there could be some, some other opportunities or things that, you know, we're not thinking of that we can add to the support that we have at Wiley for, for right at school. And so I'll follow up on all those things you've mentioned, Jim.
Yeah, I think the need to, the ability to scale up the right at school is important. Because the longer we stay remote, I think the more it's necessary to have someplace for children to go to do their studies so that the parents can go to work.
I agree with, with, with what Molly has said. Couple of Fridays ago, I had a day off and I was really eager to, as Jim had mentioned, his desire to go and see some of the sped work as we often try to visit schools and classrooms. Unfortunately, none of that was happening on Fridays. And, but what was happening was right at school at Wiley. And so I visited right at school and it was fantastic. And I have to say, you know, that, you know, it is yet another incredible example of the importance of the work that the Heights Schools Foundation is involved in. Funding much of that work and finding funds for much of that work. And Nancy deeply involved in, in coordinating funds to help support that work as well. So, you know, really a big bravo to the work that's being done there, the work of the Heights Found, Heights Schools Foundation, which, who also put on an amazing 40th anniversary of the distinguished alumni inductions this, this past weekend. What a joy that was. But I, I also, you know, in terms of the return to school, we are all eager, I think, to return to school. And we as board members have received a number of communications. As, as Jim mentioned, on both sides, we have some families reaching out saying, hey, I really need my children to go back to school in order to continue to support my family, which is a, a real deep, legit need. However, we're also hearing that from other families, hey, this is going well. I'm not eager to run back into, into, you know, a school building. We have members of our staff who are deeply concerned on both ends, you know, about the health as well as the instruction and feeling very torn there. I spoke with a member of our staff today, actually, about that challenge about really feeling that the best instruction that she delivers is always face-to-face, building those human relationships. And that's really difficult through technology. But at the same time, this is a, you know, a person who has quite a few years in the district and is really worried about the, the potential impact of COVID on her. And that's a very legitimate concern as well. So it's, it's a, it's a very, very difficult balancing act that we're all involved in. And I just wanted to sort of finish up with, with, again, reiterating the lessons learned, you know? And we have to forgive each other and accept each other's, you know, none of us have been through this before. And so there are some expected, you know, hiccups along the way and lessons to be learned. And we must allow everyone that opportunity to learn. So the communications will get better. I have no question about it because I know how committed we all are to that. So I really thank everybody who's been involved in, in this work. And, you know, what a strange trip we're all on.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say this was the year that nobody was planning on any ways, shape or form. And yeah, I want to thank everyone. I mean, I want to thank staff. I know I thanked the special ed teachers earlier, but I want to thank all of our staff. I want to thank our parents. I mean, our parents have really had to endure some significant challenges this year that none of us thought we would ever see. So there's just, I, I really appreciate your sentiments there, Dan, about, you know, none of us have been through this before and we're all trying to learn our way. And not everything we do is perfect. I know we're all trying our best. It reminds me of a, one of the press conferences that Governor Cuomo gave. And one of the reporters asked him, you know, can you rate your performance? And he said, I'll, I'm trying my best. And I think that that's where everyone involved in this situation, I think we're all trying our best. So Liz, I, I think you want us to vote on this and make a decision tonight, correct?
Yes, knowing that it's just a decision to, that we'll start remote and we'll need to, to circle back as we see what the rest of the second quarter looks like.
So I'm going to propose a motion. I want to, you know, if anybody wants to amend it, but the proposed motion that I will make is, I, I'm going to ask if I have a motion to start second quarter remote, so to start second quarter remote for the majority of our students and continuing to offer in-person for our M D A U students with the option for the M D A U students to move to remote if they choose. Does that cover what you're asking us to vote on, Liz?
Yes.
So can, Liz, what can we, what sort of a timetable can we, and this may be limited, but what sort of a timetable can we give those families today about when, you know, we're going to start it? But when will we, how much warning will they have when we're going to go, when we're going to go back into school? You know, I, I think we do really need to try to whatever degree we can give our families and our staff some idea about we won't be back in the classroom before blank, as of today.
I'd like to, and I understand your question, Dan. I'd like to, before I made that recommendation, I do need to talk back with our committees just to see what that cycle would be. That's kind of what I was referencing in that next step slide. So I may ask the board to quickly convene again next week, just to kind of look at what that cycle is. But I don't want to put a, put some weeks out or put a date out without, you know, going back to that group to get their recommendation.
So would you be willing to say if we're not going to be meeting again until next week? And we're, we're not going to, we're, we're going to give folks at least a week's notice, so it's not going to be for two weeks? We can say that safely tonight?
We can safely say that. I think two-week cycles will be our minimum cycles. But I still do want to give something more revised to the board for their consideration.
Good, I'm, I'm totally comfortable with, if that's the best we can do tonight, I'm totally comfortable with that. I just wanted to give them something tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, go ahead, Jim.
Well, I, I don't think two weeks is enough, just saying. But I think for the purpose of tonight, it's indefinitely until we make a decision. And I think that indefinite time, we need to figure out by you talking to your, your group, Liz. So I think, you know, I, I'm okay certainly going forward with this, with this resolution. We all know it was our intent to stay remote. I'm sorry, go back after the ninth week. We know we're not doing that. But I think we need to have, I think we need to have much, you know, we, we need some dates on when our families can expect when the next decision is going to be made. And you can get those dates to us by the time we meet, I, I would be okay with that.
And, and, and don't we have to make that determination also based on, you know, where, where our levels are?
Correct. So I want to see, if we, if we're able to reconvene next week, we'll have at least two weeks of, of level data that we can use to make that decision. So to Jim's point, if we, I would say, I would recommend that we, at this point, delay the start until, that would be the week of November 16th. With the caveat that that could certainly be extended, but I want to return to the committees to really talk through that cycle. So, and, and Jim, I do understand your point in terms of two weeks may not be enough time. But that'll give us, you know, that'll give me some time just to kind of really see what that cycle, what's recommended by our planning committees on that cycle. So if we could just adjust that, I would suggest adjusting the motion, Jody, to delay, to delay the start until at least November 16th with the, with the realization that we could be out, we could be delaying even longer.
Liz, is one of the reasons why you're concerned about the timeframes because the memorandum, memorandum of understanding that has to be worked out with the union? Or does this just get, or does the current MOU just, just transfer while we stay remote?
We still have to do another MOU. I really want to get a little bit more trend data on our levels in the county. And I also, you know, I really do want to respect all the members of the committee who have been working on this from the beginning of the year to get, and they've been talking to teachers and parents and administrators to kind of see what would be the best approach. And so I want to make sure I give those committees that time. That'll be the, the task that they will have. Their, you know, their next task is just to have that recommended, you know, timeline really worked out. I know that there was a draft that they were considering, but I really want to go back and make sure that's, that that's what we want to recommend.
Okay, that's fair.
One thing I will also say to our families is that we will keep you updated weekly on where we are. So we'll follow up, you know, our communication for this week will lay this out so parents are very, very clear on where we are with that. I know that people want to know, I wish that we could say for sure where we're going to be, but, you know, things are very dynamic. You know, we have area districts that were hybrid last week that went remote this week. You know, there are people that were planning on starting, planning on starting this week that stayed remote this week. So, you know, we, I kind of want to make sure that we have some wiggle room as, as things kind of change around.
And it's even changed, I mean, I know even just talking to the school board presidents that I speak with regularly, even things I was hearing on Thursday were then different Friday, were then different Saturday, were then different Sunday on where, you know, people's feelings were about where, you know, to continue their model, to pull back, to go remote. It, it was a very fluid situation all weekend. From my perspective, the thing I want to make sure is that, you know, kids get into a routine and a rhythm and I don't want to disrupt that for a week or two and then, you know, go back and flip-flop. I think that's even more disruptive than to be in something that's working and to keep it going. So I'm in, in support of this resolution and I will read it again to make sure that we have it correct and also because I do need to get the motion in the second. So do I have a motion to start the second quarter remote until at least November 16th for the majority of our students? And continue to offer in-person services for the M D A U students with the option for the M D A U students to move to remote if they choose?
So, so you motioned, I second.
Mr. Danner, will you call the roll?
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Rigg?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. That was the last item on our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we do, Jody, do we want to think about a meeting for next week? The governor does his color codes on Thursdays, I believe. Would we want to think about next Thursday in the evening?
Yep.
I'm open then. And then if we, whenever we do that, Liz, perhaps circling back to Molly's question from earlier, could, could we ask if maybe Joe DiMatto would have a chance to give us a brief update on what he's thinking for?
On boards, yes. Yep.
He may not have that information from OHSAA and the county, but whatever, whatever he can give us, I think we'd appreciate.
Okay. I'm leaving on the 29th?
Is that next, yeah, is that next, next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
I have a training session on the 29th for poll monitoring. So could we do it early? I have to be in a training session at seven.
What about the 30th of Friday?
Friday, I think, is clear. Yes, Friday would be great.
That would be better because we do have conferences on Thursday, so the 30th would be better.
And what's this meeting, what's the purpose of this meeting, Dan?
We'll have a workshop so that we can provide a recommendation for the rest of the second quarter. By then we'll have two, two weeks of data from the Board of Health. But then we'll have two, two weeks of data from the Board of Health. And we'll also discuss winter athletics.
Does that give you enough time?
And we should, we should keep in mind that the data from the Board of Health lags at least one week. Some of the indicators are two weeks out. So we are looking at the past and we don't know what the present looks like. It's like the opposite, I mean, it's like astronomy, let's just put it that way.
So, yeah, that's the case for for some of those indicators, that is true, Malia. But we will also have some contact from them. By the time we meet on the 30th, we would have had two meetings with the Board of Health so that they can provide a little more insight into those numbers too. So we'll have more information.
That's great.
Because our next meeting isn't until the 10th, correct? November 10th, that's going to happen on my calendar.
Yeah.
So does the 30th work for everyone?
Works for me.
It depends on the time. What time are we looking at?
I'm open.
I think we have to be careful about having meetings on a Friday evening because these meetings that we have require staff. And, you know, their weekend has started. You know, I can meet, but these meetings are going to have to be short. A lot of people make plans on Friday night with their families.
Well, if we could do a five o'clock and earlier meeting?
I'm okay with, I'm okay with with any of the times. I'm free, you know, maybe earlier. And also, as weird as it sounds, there's a lot of people that watch these things, which I don't get, but more power to everybody that wanted to watch, okay?
This is great TV, Jim.
Action packed, full of suspense.
I can start as early as about 3:30. So anytime after 3:30, I can be home.
I can make any time work.
All right, why don't we say, does 3:30 work for everyone else on the board?
Yeah, I'd rather a little later so I can get some more work done before I have to sit in front of the computer.
Some people are, you know, work and
Right.
Have to.
So five would be great for me.
To the employers that pay our bills.
Jody, I'd suggest that you just pull the board and just set up a meeting.
Okay. I'll do that. Or we want to try and get a meeting next week. And preferably after Thursday. And we can't do election night, which would be into the following week. Is it safe to say, like, within the next 10 to 12 days?
Yes.
Safe to, safe to say what? I missed the first part of your question.
If we scheduled the meeting within the next 10 to 12 days. We can't do it before Thursday because you need to have the information from Thursday. I want to, I want to be sensitive to the Friday issue. So I'll pull, and is it safe to say I'll look at dates in the next 10 to 12? Well, within the next two weeks? And see what works.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, so that was the last item on our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Danner, will you call the roll?
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Serene?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
All right. Good night, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.